I'd like to make one change on the agenda. I'd like to move the request for very end with Mr. Lawson up to under six pages.
Okay, to the top of the unfinished business?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? I'll stand for a motion. Make a motion. You have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Do I have a second? The movement is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval of minutes. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six sets of minutes. Five of them are work sessions. One organizational meeting and one regular council meeting. Because everybody had a chance to go through the minutes.
One motion for all?
I will take a motion anyway you want to give it one.
I will make a motion to accept the minutes for number six, seventeen, thirty, regular meeting fourteen, January four, and special work session of January four.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to accept the minutes for the three, four special work sessions, the regular meeting and the organizational council meeting. As written, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. But Trustee Mitchell, any further discussion?
One clarification, please?
Yes, sir.
On the organizational meeting in January fourth, I want to make sure that it included Jenny jury because I had made mention of our approving her in the January meeting, but without a date visiting there.
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking, sir. That is, that's all pointed in regular?
I just wanted to clarify that that does include Jenny because if the...
Yes, it does include Jenny. It includes everybody that was on the list. Okay? Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, announcements, discussion. Downey and Company are here to do a presentation on safety counseling and municipal insurance. Ms. Hennessy, is that, am I saying that correctly?
Yes, sure.
You may have the floor now.
Thank you.
Do you want the lights turned off or are you... okay.
We can turn the lights off as long as no one goes to sleep.
Leave the lights on? Eric, you're in. That's good. Just disrupt.
I want to talk to Chris. I want to thank Mayor Council for sharing someone here evening with us tonight. My name is Kathy Hennessy. I'm the Governmental Risk Director with Downey and Company. And I am here with my team member, Chris Downey. So we want to talk to you a little bit tonight about what is risk. So risk is the possibility or chance of loss, danger, or injury. So in the position that you're in, you have two types of risk that you're dealing with here in the village, as it is everywhere. We have internal risk. These are things that happen inside the village itself, not here, I'm sure, but one of those other 117 municipalities. We could have harassment between employees. We could have employees who get hurt. We could have accidents again. I'm sure that's not your police partner. So we have all those things and we have to figure out how we're going to address them. We also have external things. As the community, you're serving your citizens. You have activities for them. You have facilities where they come. And so you have to address these exposures. You know, things like, well, here we have weather related. You know, once we have the snowfall, people track it in, they can slip and fall. All these things can expose the village to liability. So what do you do about it? Well, we can always just say no, right? When people say, let's have an event without a hall. Let's just say no to that and avoid all the hassles that come with that. Or we may decide we want to retain some of that risk through a deductible. You know, anything over this amount, we'll pay this in-house. You know, something like that. Or we transfer it. That's where insurance comes in. You pay a premium and the insurance company then accepts that risk on your behalf. Or we may contract it out. A lot of municipalities, that happens with waste management. You know, they hire one of those companies and they say, we don't want to do this. We'll pay you and then you accept that risk. Then we also have reducing our list through loss prevention. So how can the Downey team help the village? We have a variety of services that we offer. Asset management. These are things like helping you make sure that you're insuring all the things that should be insured, but at the same time, not insuring things that you don't have any longer. And trust me, it happens. Budgets are tight. No one wants to be spending premium on things we don't have. Coverage analysis. Do your coverages cover all the exposures that you have? Do you have everything that you need? Do you have coverage for IT issues? Cyber, all of those things. Then deductible analysis. That's one of those decisions. You know, if you have a good track record like you do here in the village, then you would be more in a position to carry a higher deductible and then get premium savings in return. Property evaluations. We'll go into that a little more with the package that I sent you. But what we do there is we come in and look at your buildings. And that is something that we did do. And we make sure that you're aware of what those should be insured for. Claims management. We have a dedicated expert on our team. Your staff has enough on their plate with their hat rack of different things that they have that having to keep coming back and checking on what's happening with the claim can be very time consuming. And it's also not your value with. So we have someone with a long history of claims experience on our staff who from the time the claim happens will assist with filing it. And he'll be the one who babysits that claim so that frees up your staff to do other things. From start till the close of that claim, he's on your side. Contractual review. We see this come in in a lot of different ways. Here's some of the facilities you've contacted out, like the organizations that contact over at the library or your chamber, your skating rink. There's things that need to be looked at with respect to insurance to protect the village's interest on those. Also, special events. Ooh, they can get really special. With the experience that we have, we can help you in the planning phase to make things, make sure that things are addressed that could pop up and be an issue for you later so that you can go off and not have claims coming out of it. So why team down? Municipal experience. I will date myself here and say I have 30 years of experience dealing with municipalities, dealing with the Village of Clough Rock. Have good relationships with these people and, you know, they're not just customers, they're friends. And in 30 years, I can, I will never say I've seen it all, but I've seen a lot. And that experience can be put to work for you in knowing things like, what are those sticking points in contracts that end up in toward liability cases? What are the things at those special events that are going to be problematic that are not addressed? And then insurance expertise. Also, my wheelhouse, but also the Downey team comes with a lot of experience there in safety and loss prevention. We have the services of safety counseling that would be brought back to you, no longer available at the fund. Municipal experience, 78 years. Two New Mexico municipalities. On insurance, 80 years. Safety and loss prevention. Over 10 consultants with over 200 years of experience in safety and loss prevention. Not only in providing the training to your people, but also, God forbid, OSHA comes knocking on your door and says, let me in. We want to look at everything. And sometimes there's violations that come out of that. With the services of safety counseling, they will help you resolve every one of those issues. They've been there before. They know the regulations and they know how to get it mitigated for the best result for you. So in summary, it's the total package. So in your hands in the blue folder, we put together a proposal for the Village of Clough Rock for your review that would include all of these services I've described. They could be... The other thing is, it works either if you choose to stay with the New Mexico Self-Insurance Fund or if you're interested in also seeing what is available out in the market. We have other carriers who are very interested in writing municipal business. So with our team, if that is something that's of interest to you, we are happy to go out to the market and find out what's available and how it compares to what you have through the fund. Also with safety counseling, you know, that's something that the municipalities have been used to having that training every single month, and that's no longer happening. I've talked to a lot of people. There's a very big concern with that. You know, that's what keeps your people working and safe. If you have done any hiring lately, then you know. It's hard to find even warm bodies these days. So the idea is to keep your employees safe and keep them at work. At the back of this proposal, you'll see a property evaluation report. I want to say thank you to Jubel for being my escort around the village. We went everywhere. And I have to say hats off to the village. The housekeeping in your facilities is to be committed. I have been in a lot of municipal buildings in my 30-year tenure, and it's impressive. Especially when your sewage treatment plant is actually clean. So hats off to that. So what is this report? There is a software package in the industry. It's called Marshall and Swift. They have experts who gather information based on your region, based on the different factors in your buildings, what they're made of, what the walls are like, what your roof is, how many toilets, and that is why there are pictures of toilets. You have to count, how many toilets are there? How many sinks are there? How many things like that? All of this gets put in and then it comes up with the replacement cost for what that building should be insured at. Now, there are some in here that I want to go back and take a look at again because some of those values I felt were just a little off, the skating rink being one of them. The caveat on here, you'll notice we don't have values in there for the water treatment plant, for the wastewater treatment plant. Because those are special risks, we did still want to take a look at them and be there and give the information. But if you look on the summary, you'll see on the lift station that we actually value, the value of the building itself is much lower than what you guys have scheduled. Now, why is that? Because it has very expensive equipment that has a very important job in there. And that is true of all of those facilities. So Marshall and Swift doesn't cover things like that. So that's something that you would need to do if you're digging on it. And that's good enough. Also, the museum. When you're talking about historical buildings like that and the contents that they have, that is a very special, very small expertise that you have people who are experienced in and could use and things like you have over at the museum. Unfortunately, very modest that they were closed that day, so we didn't get to actually go in and tour that. You'll see there's also some recommendations that have been made. Things like, like I said, you have the leading facility of the library, the Arts Society. So when you have things like that, when we come in and we take a look at those contracts and say, this has been addressed, but what about this part? So that's one of the things that we do. Because in 30 years, like I said, haven't seen it all, but I've seen a lot. And there's certain things that you just don't think of when you're writing those agreements that can turn out to be a lawsuit for you there. So I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Sorry, still looking.
It's okay. It's a lot of information.
So your company is overall insurance or more just the risk management and helping us through the insurance? Make sure we have that covered.
It's both. That's why we're saying it's a complete risk management function. Downey and Company has its hands in the insurance market. They're experts at that. But they also are very big on the whole risk management component. When we first had discussions, the person who introduced me to Chris and to Joe was Brock Carter, safety counselor. His relationship with them is with their current clients. They say, we need safety to be a part of this. It is their company philosophy that those things go hand in hand. And we are like-minded in that, and that is why I decided to take a position with Downey because they wanted to expand that into the municipal. So as I stated earlier, if you choose and you want to stay with the fund, we can still do these services for you. The fund ended its contract with safety counseling after 35 years, and that ended the safety program for the fund. In the interim, two years, they hired one person. And as you see here, you have at your service here with safety counseling, 10 individuals with many, many years of experience serving the New Mexico communities. And so that gets returned. They will be down here doing in-person training just as they did before. So I can tell you with 10 consultants, it's a challenge. There's 118 municipalities. So if 10 people, if it was a challenge for them to provide those services, you can only imagine how far one person's going to get.
And how many municipalities do y'all have in New Mexico?
In New Mexico?
That y'all?
That we currently do. This is a brand new program. And it's not something we're offering to everybody.
Kind of a pilot program.
It's a pilot program and we are, like I said, with 30 years, I know the communities that have the right mindset and those are the ones that we're interested in working with. And there's something that did fall off. But yes, it is in the beginning. Our first client was the City of Moriarty. There's others that we're also working with to get their training going again, to start these evaluations and return the services that they want.
What, with the members of the self-insured fund, but where do you see deficiencies in that coverage compared to what you're talking about?
Well, for one, the staffing. And I don't know how much you're aware of what's going on, but the largest portion of the staff that the New Mexico Municipal League and the Self-Insurance Fund has left, people that have been there many years. And so the people that are coming in do not have municipal experience. A lot of them are state, former retired state employees that don't have, it's not the same animal. And so there is that, the big loss of the safety program. But coverage itself, when the policies renewed on July 1st, I had people that voluntarily just sent them to me because they received new policies and to speak to some of the issues specifically with the property. There's concerning language in there that leaves it very open for discussion. Things like, it will be up to the Risk Services Director to decide what your coins should be on point. There's another statement that says if the fund determines that it has reached the limit in paying those property claims in one year, they can say that they're not going to pay any more claims. I mean, I read it. I'm like, am I really reading this? It's not correct. There were things, the inland marine has always been covered as part of the property program. The declaration pages that were sent out said you have this much coverage for your inland marine. The policy they sent out says it's excluded. The autos for the last 30 something years. You know, you cover autos, liability in full coverage together, just like on your personal auto policy, right? You don't cover the liability with one company and go somewhere else and buy comp and collision. But on the deck pages, suddenly that's been separated. The liability is over here and now the auto coverage has been moved under the property program. It's a lot of things that just don't make sense. And it's indicative of lack of experience. And there's, like I said, there are concerns with some of the language. If you're interested, I have a copy that I have highlighted that I can send to you at a later time if you must. You can see for yourself what I'm talking about.
I think that would be helpful where we just prepare after to have.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you coming down here and giving your demonstration. Well, it gives us a lot to think about, that's for sure.
And you have our contact and further questions that you may have. And thank you for your time and thank you to Jubel for showing me all of these facilities.
Where are you based out of?
Albuquerque.
Albuquerque, okay.
Did anybody have any questions for you?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Move up to marriage report. This is an interesting one. A low-pressure membrane filtration specialist, Scott Powell and Tony Kropster. Are both of them here?
Yes, sir.
They have passed two out of four classes on this. This is not your wastewater 1, 2, 3, and 4. They're both already fours and fours?
Yes, sir.
This is an additional class. According to our employee manual, when you take, get new certifications and stuff like that, you are potentially, not guaranteed, but potentially up for a raise. And since I didn't know anything about this one, I asked the two of them to explain what these classes are and what they do for us as a village. Gentlemen, y'all may have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll start, I guess. We're members of the South Central Membrane Association. It's a specialized group. It's a group that we're just concentrating on membranes. And then we have four different classes. They came up with these mock classes. They're membrane operator certification, 1, 2, 3, and 4. So out of the four, myself and Tony have passed two of them, the level 3 and 4, the mock 3 and 4, which is for the MBR and the low-pressure membranes. There's still a beginner's membrane operation class and a RO, high-pressure class that we haven't attended yet and aren't planning on attending and hopefully get the certifications and that also. Right now, the state doesn't, our state doesn't recognize it, but Texas is in the process of getting these certifications, you know, under the state side. And most of the time, New Mexico not doing membranes much and learning the certifications and all. They're kind of following suit behind Texas and a few other states. There's California kind of using this. Florida, I was told, like up in the Northwest, there's a few states that are using these membrane classes. Right now, like I said, like AWWA or EPA doesn't recognize them, but they're in the process of trying to get each state and these associations and EPA and such trying to get them where they will accept them. So we're just, we're just trying to stay ahead of the game right now. We're trying to, myself and Tony, we're trying to go to any classes and learn the membrane, as we know. We're all trying to get into reuse project here and get this wastewater into drinking water. So anything, the way we're looking at it, is anything we can get a step ahead, you know, be ahead of the game. That's what we're trying to, trying to progress and get to that point.
So what the classes are is our first, we're double level fours through the state of New Mexico. And what that is, is kind of old technology, like aeration basins, trickling filters, stuff like that. So these classes are more geared toward advanced technology. So membrane bioreactors, ultrafiltration, nanofiltration, microfiltration, and stuff like that. So these classes that we're taking and the tests that we cast so far is stuff that we will be running in our plans. So the MBR one that we passed, which was mock 4, is at the wastewater plant. We have two MBRs that are set in there and we're running those. The water plant will have ultrafiltration, the low-pressure membrane. The RO, which is a high filter membrane, will have ultraviolet and stuff like that. So these classes are geared more toward advanced technology.
Basically, everything that we're going to present.
Everything that we're going to be incorporating into our systems, right?
So like Scott said, they don't recognize it now, but more states are potentially going to go to it. And like Texas, New Mexico follows Texas guidelines a lot. Them and California, more Texas. So as Texas comes on board with it, more than likely, New Mexico will follow suit. And so if we have these classes, then they'll grandfather in. So we're just really trying to stay ahead of the game. So when they do decide that they're going to require this, they'll just accept what we already have.
We're just trying to prove, we're saying, you know, like I said, we're trying to get ahead of the game here. Trying to be, go above and beyond what's, what they're, the state right now at this point is saying, hey, double level fours for everybody. Well, we've done that, but we're absolutely going above and beyond that. I'm trying to prove that we're, we're serious about this and we want to learn. We want to do everything the right way.
How long were each of these classes?
How long have you been?
Yeah, are they a week, a month?
There are four, four days, three days of class and fourth day of testing. We have to take a test and pass a test.
Yes, on each level. And they're, they do them at various times of the year, you know. So right now with COVID and everything, things have been kind of laid back and slowed down. So, but now they're trying to gear it up a little more and have them a little more often.
What do you feel like was the most difficult thing you learned in this that you didn't know before?
How to run and how to operate ROs. I mean, MBRs, I'd already been kind of running things, so I pretty well knew not everything, but I've learned, picked up a lot of pointers and there's a lot of, a lot of good contacts and people there and instructors are certified. And they're, they're trying to get even more certified off. And then, they're trying to get even more certified off, uh, presenters and teachers. And the more they can give, and then Texas, once they get satisfied what they want, then they're, they're already on board and legislation is saying, "We want it, we want this as curriculum and part of the certification levels in the future."
Anybody else have any questions? Now, this I put on the marriage report. I did not put on, it's an action item. Because it's something that was brand new. I didn't want to just jump in here without hearing about it and offering a raise because of doing it. I wanted everybody to bounce it around and think about it. And that's, obviously, I don't want any answers tonight. I want you to kind of think about it and...
One thing that I'd like to do is run this past the new engineers that are on our whip project or...
CDN, is that right?
Yes. And just ask their opinion. Because again, the whole Pure Project has been pushing the envelope on all these things. If the dovetails in that that has, that has more meaning than it doesn't, that New Mexico doesn't accept it yet, I'm not surprised. We tend to break up the end there pretty often. But, uh, yeah, it's a good thing, I mean, we need to know, the more we know about the systems that are going to go into the, do the Pure Project, the more confidence we can build in the community.
Because they do have hands-on, besides just sitting there reading the book, you know, or seeing presentation. We do have hands-on, so we get in there and change out filters or, you know, things like that. So, it's, it's not just sitting there watching movies, you know, watching things on the screens. But we do take a test, we pass, you have to do seventy percent to pass. We did that.
We've done that. We've, uh, we've gone to where they've cut the filters apart, and we've inspected them and, and learned how to, basically, they call it an autopsy. They take an old one, they break it apart, see how it clogged up with scale and everything, and then you determine how to adjust your system from there.
Interesting stuff.
All right. Thank you very much.
I would add, one little thing. They, uh, there is a, something, Paul, I can't remember the full name of it, by Farmington, that does teach the same stuff here, but it costs thousands and thousands of dollars to go to them in classes. So, this here, I think they were about $300 to take the class. So, and it's the same curriculum.
Where was this one at?
This Thomas St. Pollock lives that he live.
Say that again?
Where was the one you did that?
The membrane, the MBR one we did in California, the, the ultrafiltration one that we just did was in El Paso. And then, El Paso is supposed to have another one in April for the RO. So...
It should be the mock two.
Yeah.
And it is, yeah. And it's in March, actually. I just found out.
Oh, in March?
I would like to thank y'all for taking the initiative and, I mean, definitely. We're going to a very complex system.
Exactly.
We have operators that are willing to do the work.
We are.
Thank you. All right. So, everybody just soak that around in their head, and you can shoot me a message or think about it and... Let's move on. Ski Cloud Craft? Everybody got the Ski Cloud Craft report? Looks like they're not here. They've been here pretty regularly. Of course, they're busy right now.
So, Michael let me know that their snowboards came in today, and they're busy inventorying.
I think they've been really busy this year because a lot of the busy weekends are high winds and bad weather, so...
It's pretty steady, but I, I don't know if we had, maybe we had...
No. Of course, it's a lack of snow.
The village of Riedos, it's, it's businesses, it's business. I thought it was a great name to name.
Oh, it is.
That's good. We need to have more cooperation with our other mountain community.
Well, I mean, it just shows that Riedos is hurting as bad as we are, and they have more tourists than, they have places to put them, and I'm glad you could take some of them.
We did.
All right, reports. We've got judicial, police, library, Wells Springs, water production, lodger tax, check, check register.
The lodger tax is going to be the most difficult thing in the last twenty years or something. I was amazed when I read that report.
Actually, that's one that I didn't look at.
They're already, they're already ahead of the game, and they still haven't done a month of reporting.
These are good problems, yeah. That means more people are in the town and spending money other places, too.
Good question on our, our water, uh, report. We used to have the list of meters that showed how many per gallon at the different divisions. The meter average consumption area of that. I'm lost with that.
Yeah, we are, too. We've made contact with community billing, um, because we're asking them questions on some particulars on billing that you guys are looking at, plus the averages that are coming out of this report.
And so, it doesn't want to push. I'm encouraged that our, our unexplained loss is still low. That I'm cautiously optimistic that real, you know, we've been so many years, we've had such a higher number that has been shown. This, that's, that's good.
And y'all found one or two pretty major leaks this funding?
Yeah, but they went to the meter, they were a little more shy, but still.
They were brand new ones, right?
They were getting issues. And one has a hundred thousand gallons down in Chicago.
All right. Mr. Terry, do you have anything on the reports?
I do. I have a few, um, changes, some updates to the Project National Report. For the Pure Project, as my notes show, I spoke with Robert Bowley, the CDN submit on January 5th. Uh, we briefly discussed the scope of work again. They're working on that still with the approximate contract cost. So, the, they should both be ready mid-February. He, um, once again talked that when the scope of work comes out, the first two priorities will be the tie-in to, uh, the tank for the water to, the washing, the washing water, and then the snowmaking. I asked him if those two priorities would delay the rest of the project by any way. He said no, that those would be going hand-in-hand and wouldn't delay the completion of the Pure Project. For the road projects, um, I had, if you recall at the last meeting, I had stated that I was going to have, that I was going to discuss with you all tonight permission to possibly use the engineering services of STANTEC again for our future road projects. Um, after discussing with the mayor and Barbara, it makes more sense for me to get, to meet with them and see what they can offer us and how much that would cost. So, I will be setting up a meeting with, with STANTEC and discussing the Highway 82 to Squirrel project, the monies that we have for the Aryan Woodlands, Wayback Vista, Maple, and there's some other, um, around the village road work that we can do. Hopefully, we will be granted the monies to buy the heavy equipment that we presented our request of legislation for, the water truck, the roller truck. And then, hopefully, STANTEC can help us, consult with us on how we can use some of our own work, what products we can use. So, I'll meet with them first, and then I'll come back to you next month and have a small presentation on that. The senior center, construction's underway. If you recall, a meeting or two back, I had presented you with some possible change orders. The three change orders on products, if you will, we're actually negotiating those products and changing out for some maybe alternatives. The one change order for delay of time and the extra days that they wanted to charge us for, for delay due to, um, the senior center not being, uh, everything pulled out of it, and then the days where there was a delay because of CID permitting. I did get them to dismiss that. And instead, we're going to, they, we extended the contract completion, the substantial completion date from March 10th to March 25th. We did get an email, I did it for yesterday, that the windows we wanted to use had a leave time of mid-April. And that's not going to work because I have a substantial completion date of March 25th. So, the architect and I and the project manager with Epix are working on some alternative windows. It'll be something to the effect of, instead of six-foot wide windows, they'll be four-foot. Just something that can be reasonably negotiated. We got the surveys in for Xena Park. I did forward that to ASA for the skating rink project. There are some, Kelly with ASA did send me an email this morning. There are some additional things that she was looking for on those surveys. Line of bump is, um, utility locates. I will get with Jubal and see if we have any mapping of any kind for that. And then, uh, she still will be able to keep working on that schematic design that we asked them to do. And hopefully, I can get with the surveyor to go out and fine-tune what we have. As, as the mayor and trustee Maynard, as you know, I didn't know exactly everything to ask for on those surveys. When they came in, I was excited. They looked like they had a lot of information, but there's some things that ASA is asking for that's not on there. And I can meet with both of you as to how maybe we can get that information. The Forest Service, I have reached out to them again to begin the process of the GIS, GPSing of the property for the exactly, the description of the property that we want to purchase from them, that this sewer plant is located on. I am getting the runaround here probably pretty soon. I had a good, uh, good communication line going when Randall Travis, the district ranger, was still here. He had moved on. And the person I'm working with right now is passing me on to other people that aren't aware of the project. So, I will probably ask, Mayor asked me to write a letter to, what is his name? Travis? Anyway, to the person that is above this person that's not cooperating with me. Mountain Top Water Sewer Line Replacement, still working on the, the final draft of the PER. Uh, we had, uh, there's a governor's summit on Friday with, in Santa Fe. It was going to be in person, but now it's going to be virtual to talk about all of these big pools of money that we've been hearing about, these infrastructure funds and such. I had been contacted to submit two projects. I put together, um, a project sheet for the emergency services complex and then one for the water sewer lines on Mountain Top. They're both three million dollar-plus projects. So, I had been asked to put those or send those, and then we were going to be able to present at the summit on Friday. We were going to be able to do the actual project presentations. That sense has changed. Now, it's virtual. I've got the agenda of the summit today, and there doesn't seem to be any, um, sections on the agenda for those kind of presentations. There's a couple of sections that are for panel discussion. I don't know what that looks like, what that's going to look like on Friday. I'm still going to send my project worksheets in to AJ Forte with the lead there. They asked, they were the ones who asked for it. And I will be on the 9:00 to 4:30 Zoom meeting. And every chance I get to interject any help that Cloud Craft can get, I will do that. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was kind of looking forward to stand-up. Okay. Did we have anything else on our reports? Phillips clerk, did you have anything to add?
All right. One question in our register, the total ledger. What, uh, what large format drawing did we pay $4,700 for?
For the, all of the maps that we have, they were all taken off site, yes. And they were scanned and delayed to finish and have a backup and everything, so they don't...
So, they're all visual now?
They're all digital.
Yeah, that, that's great. I remember, I remember that. Thank you. Hopefully, we can keep them in good order. Get the units digitized.
I have a question on the reports, too.
Yes, sir.
You got two entries on two different reports, and it's the same entry. One of them wanted business cards, $248. And it's reported on this one, and then following it is business cards, $248, and it's on a separate report. And the totals are added up differently on each report. Is there a reason for that?
That I do not know.
But can you tell me what the date is and what the page? And then, like, we can drill down and find out what they are.
Sure, Mark. Why would you make the entry of two different reports if it's the same date? Wrong guests, the same account.
I don't know, sir. We'll check on it and see if there's any other team. Tell them.
Very good.
Okay. Anything else? I would like to, like to stand for a motion.
Accept our reports as written.
I have a motion to accept our reports as written by trustee Maynard. Do I have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Removed and seconded by trustee Mitchell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, it was moving to unfinished business. Mr. Blessam, you have been moved up to the front. All right. Thank you.
How are we all this evening?
I wouldn't do that for anybody. Since you've sat through many of my meetings.
I have. I was, I saw the length of this agenda, and I, I owe Mr. Tien a beer. First, I'd like to say, uh, welcome to Ms. McCoy. My name is Tom Blessam. I'm the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and on behalf of the commission, we look forward to working with you. Uh, tonight, uh, we have two variance requests. This is for two adjacent properties by the same owner. But they are two separate properties, and they aren't put together as one. So, they're, they're two separate variance requests. Uh, this is Ronald, brought to us by Ronald and Tina Brown. They have gone through the process, and I'll let Jenny, Jenny talk about that in a minute. Um, I'll give you the punchline. Uh, the commission is recommending that you approve the variance request. The variance request is for a 10-foot setback. These properties are located on Victoria Street. As you go from Old Victoria Street into, uh, the new subdivision of Skywater, they're, you know, in that first block, they're up against the National Forest on the backside.
But they're not in Skywater.
They are in Skywater.
Oh, they are in Skywater.
As you come from the old, as you, it, it, when you get into their fourth and fifth properties are so down the line, just inside, inside the Skywater. So, they do back up to, to National Forest. You want to talk about the process, do you?
Yes. So, um, we received requests for variances from Shelley Hughes, architect, on behalf of Mr. Menendez Brown. We held a public hearing on November 1st, at which time, after presentation by Ms. Hughes, the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that the plans that she submitted were not detailed enough, showing, um, exactly the placement of the houses on each of the property. So, we had a follow-up meeting on December 14th, at which time she presented detailed plans. And, um, we went through the whole presentation, and the, the planning and zoning came up with the recommendations to go ahead and prove, uh, the 10-yard, 10-foot rear yard setbacks on each lot. There was one letter of opposition received on 1317, but the, just the one letter made it a sixty-seven percent of the property owners being considered in favor of.
And 10-foot adequate for fire, uh, combustion work, this kind of thing? It backs up on the National Forest?
Backs up on the National Forest, yes.
That's a weird shaped block.
They are, they are irregular shaped blocks.
And if you look at your map, there's a map for each property, but they, they are adjacent to each other. And there is a, a utility easement that's 30 feet wide that runs between the two properties.
They buck both sides of that easement?
They, they buck both sides of that easement, yes. So, they're odd, they're odd-shaped properties. They're, they're not quite pie-shaped, but they're kind of pie-shaped. They're very narrow at one end, each of them. They're narrow at one end. And then, they have this 30-foot easement in the middle. And then, 1315...
But there's a well back there.
There is a well back in the forest and there's, there's something that goes up onto this property that they may be, it's connected to that way. But anyway, the easement is there and we have to, we have to honor that. He can't build anything on top of the easement. So they, if you recall, you know, the village code, we had a description of how to go through the variance process and sending out letters like Jenny does to the surrounding property owners so that they have a chance to voice their opinions. But we have three specific requirements and they can, they can, they have to meet one of these requirements in order to first grant a variance. One is exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific property. The second is exceptional topographical conditions. And the third is extraordinary or exceptional situation or condition of the property where strict application of the regulation would result in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties and/or undue hardship upon the owner of the property. So, you know, variances are always discretionary, but we do have parameters that we use. And in this case, they, they claimed exemptions one and three. So this is an odd shaped property. So most of our houses are square or rectangular. You can certainly build them in other shapes, but if you don't, they tend to cost more and they're difficult to build. These lots are not as steep as the lots, most of the lots in Cloudcroft, where number two usually comes into play, except for topographical conditions. But given the challenges of the shape of the properties and the large utility easements that are, that are on the properties, we felt that they did meet, meet these exceptions and therefore voted to recommend that you approve the variances on these properties. Any questions?
On our letter of opposition, if you looked at that physically, because her, sorry, whoever wrote this says that it completely blocks their view. Is that true? Is that?
Well, you know, the property owner is certainly entitled to their, their perspective about, you know, what it, what it will block. I can tell you that if you look on your map and you see the 1317, which if you're looking north will be the property on the right, so to the right of the electrical power lines, the property that that letter came from is to the right of that.
So it's past, it's to the east?
It's past, to the east. That's correct. So they have a deck along the backside of the house that overlooks the forest. So if they look to the left, you know, to their neighbor, across their neighbor's property to the left, then certainly 10 feet back, there might be a porch or a deck or a house, a part of a house. But their primary, their back line backs up to National Forest. So I.
Little bit of history on these. I was the original developer. I don't know any of this property. I have no interest in this project. Now, the, initially we requested a 10-foot variance for the whole thing when we went to bring the flat to the village. It was decided that each lot owner should come in individually. What has happened, most of the homes except this neighbor have all built within 10 feet of the rear line because we do touch National Forest. And we were in the process of selling these lots. The view of the National Forest is why they bought it. Buy a small lot and enjoy a bigger view. So it's, I think it's consistent with the way the other homes have been built, all homes except one. And like Tom's pointing out, the majority of the interest of each buyer was that uninterrupted view of the National Forest behind you.
Well, that can be farther away from power lines, so.
Sure. So we have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning to pass the variance.
Well, they're two separate problems.
It looks like on the map, the second variance, they are inside the 30 feet, but it looks like they're actually only wanting to build on 29 feet or so, right? If I'm reading that wrong. On the east side of the power line. They're not getting, they're asking for the variance, but they're not actually looking at building records.
Right, yeah. This would just be, that would just be, this just increases the building footprint, which is the available space. There's no specific plans for a house here and the variance has to be approved on, on the building footprint itself and not any specific plans, so.
To me, they would need the variance to know the perimeter that they could design within. So I don't think they have house plans at this time.
Right. And again, that's not relevant for your decision to grant a variance.
Yes, sir.
Do we approve the variance?
Do I have a motion by trustee Mitchell to approve the two variances as presented by P M Z?
Mayor, we'll need separate votes.
Separate votes.
They're two separate pieces of property.
Then I have a motion for which lot would you like to?
1315.
1315 Victoria and 1317.
Okay, we have a motion for 1315 Victoria to approve the variance. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by trustee McCoy. Any further discussion? Is this a roll call? No.
I think so. I think so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now I'll stand for another motion.
1317 Victoria.
I'll look to accept the variance request on lot 13, or address 1317.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the variance for 1317 Victoria. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Mitchell. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Denny, in the findings, effect and conclusions in law for 1315, on the second page under conclusions, there's a, there's A, but then there's B, that the petitioning process resulted in one opposition. That's a typo. This property didn't have the letter of opposition for the other one. So I will be taking that line out before you sign it.
So it was just on the one property?
1317, yes, sir.
That's the one on me saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Should, they'll never build in that area?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now we will move on to proposed adoption of ordinance 396. This is the ordinance amending subsection 2-1-2 of the Village of Cloudcroft Code establishing the term of office for members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. All this is, and we've already published it and gone through everything, this is just moving the appointments until the January of the new election. Do you have anything you want to discuss on there? Are you caught up to speed, Ms. McCoy?
Barbara introduced me to that.
Okay.
Last week.
Unless you have anything, I will stand for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number 396.
Okay, I have a motion on the table by trustee Maynard to accept the, or to adopt the ordinance 396, amending subsection 2-1-2 of the Village of Cloudcroft Code. As written, do I have a second?
Okay, I'll second.
I have a second by trustee Mitchell. Since we are dealing with ordinance, this would be a roll call vote.
You did say this has already been published?
This has been published. This is not one of the ones that we've had any big arguments about or, actually not a whole lot of discussion about, just moving it over because they moved the elections.
It really just comes back in balance with the new election cycles.
Okay? Any further discussion? Trustee Mitchell?
Aye.
Trustee Maynard?
Aye.
Trustee Teeman?
Aye.
Trustee McCoy?
Aye.
Aye for unanimous roll call vote? Yes, sir.
You're going to need to approve the publication of the adoption by title and subject matter.
Do I need a separate motion for that?
Yes.
And is it a roll call?
No.
Okay. I would like a motion to publish the ordinance by title and subject matter.
So I'll publish notice of adoption.
Okay. I have a motion on the table to publish the notice of adoption by title and subject matter by trustee Mitchell. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Maynard. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That will be published. Now, got P M Z out of the way. From page two, we are moving along. Okay, one person was left off of the list on our last appointment special meeting. So I would like to appoint employee attorney Jeff Rhodes as our village attorney.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by trustee Teeman. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee McCoy. Any discussion?
What compensation do we do for Jeff?
That's part of, it's a contract. There's a, there's an employment contract with me as a part-time employee and let's see.
So do we just vote on your appointment tonight and then review the contract? Or do they go together?
It would stay the same.
It's the same. We always go through it at the budget retreat. I know we've always looked into Jeff's contract.
Yeah, his salary is on the budget retreat supporting document.
And it's not very much for a lawyer. I think he just likes us.
He does.
It's consistent work. Been here for 50 years. We have the original hiring.
And I bring that up just because 165 in our code shows that the mayor appoints, the board trustees confirm, and we set whatever fees or compensation are going to go along with it.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to Jeff. Expect him for another 50 years. Discussion action, and this one I'm kind of excited about. We have a new hire. Oh, I have my recommendation for new hire, and that is for a new motor vehicles department, Bianca Vega. Am I saying your name right?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Vega, please tell me your name.
It's Bianca Vega, sir.
Bianca Vega. At $12 now, I don't like putting the prices on the agenda. I don't mind having at the meeting, but I was overruled on that one. She is my choice for new hire for M V D and I would like your approval.
Bianca, have you had any experience in M V D prior?
Not in M V D per se, but I do have 11 years of experience in law enforcement.
That's a good basis.
You got a driver's license?
I still do, sir.
I may make a motion to approve Bianca Vega for the new M V D position.
I have a motion on the table to approve Ms. Vega. Ms. Vega, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by trustee Mitchell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next is, I have a recommendation to approve Mary Higgins from, to approve the removal of her probationary period for Ms. Mary Higgins. She is our library aide and she has been there for six months and I've heard good things about her. I don't think I've actually met her yet. I need to.
Lisa let me know today. She apologized for not being able to make it this evening, but she said that Mary is doing a fantastic job and she gives her full support and her continuing in her position.
Okay.
Good recommendation.
And how long has she worked with us?
Six months. Well, it will be six months on February 2nd.
On the ground, okay. Okay. I will, I need a motion.
Also a move that we renews her probationary period, Mary Higgins.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to remove probationary period for Mary Higgins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Mitchell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is a raise, and this is to increase the part-time library aides to the state minimum wage of $11.50 an hour, effective January 1st, 2022. This would be Mary Higgins, Julie Johnson, and Lenore Simpson.
I'll make a motion. We pay minimum wage.
Yeah, that's the law. Okay, I have a motion on the table to raise salaries to at least minimum wage, to minimum wage, effective January 1st. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Mitchell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We can do all these one at a time or together. These are the ones that I brought up last month, except for the first two, which would be our payroll clerk and our utility clerk.
I think we got a typo.
Okay, what's your typo?
Police officer, 55 cents, 2128 probation.
Yes.
That's probation or promotion?
Probation. He was on probation.
He was on a one-year probation?
And he went out of his one-year probation period. She got a 55 cent.
Didn't we talk about him and Officer Mitchell in the same meeting? That's been about a year ago, hasn't it?
It's not reflected in either the March or the April or the February minutes from when he came on. So that's why.
Basically, we put everybody on here that I gave a raise to since I've been mayor.
I'd like to ask Jeff a question before we start talking about the individual people. Jeff, with, without prior board trustee's approval, what is the current, like this moment, status of these proposed raises?
They are voidable. It's, you know, all requires the board to approve compensation, no question. You can do it before it happens. After it happens, you ratify it, basically is what you're doing. And when you ratify it, you're ratifying something that is voidable or non-correct, if you will.
So it's real important that we understand the raises have to be done by the board. We are the board of finance, as the board of trustees. We are the only ones who can give these raises. Mayors cannot give raises. Mayors can request them. And this, this follows state law and village code. The clerks can only pay bills that we have, that we have authorized. They can't write checks to employees without our approval. This is, for us as a village, this is the most difficult thing I've had to talk about all these years. It's a procedural discrepancy is a good way, I think, to talk about it. The lesson for all of us is, is that this is not an elective item. This is followed state law in our village code. I took an oath the other night swearing I would uphold these laws. I mean those words. I take it very serious. The process works real well if we stay in order. If, when I look at these employees who are affected by this discussion tonight, I see them as families. I know, I know their responsibility. If, um, when I look at these employees who are affected by this discussion tonight, I see them as families. I know, I know their responsibilities and the members that count on their income. We should never, we should never put them in an unpleasant situation. This is, uh, the mayor has apologized for this. I appreciate them doing that. I think that's very, very big of them. The, uh, as long as the point is made and the lesson is learned, then to me, it's an easy thing to go ahead and talk about. But it, uh, we can't be confused on these issues. The, uh, mayors and clerks have very limited discretionary authority for spending public money. It is really confined to what the board approves. And that is, part of it's in our budget process, but, uh, raises for employees are per, per employee, per raise. That's just crystal clear and honest law as it can be. It is, uh, it's in our first chapter. We have these books that are right here behind us. We have this material online. We have the benefit of a very experienced attorney. There's no reason any of us should have questions on these matters. This should, if we just had asked, this, this would never have happened. And then we would have avoided. These meetings need to be more fun. This is not fun. This is hard-hitting stuff. It affects families. And, uh, we've got taxpayers out there that are trusting us to represent them. They're not. All of them were not here tonight. We're here. That's part of, part of what we have to do. Say, okay, how do you balance this? Uh, we can write it off as a mistake and just move on. We can look at it. Ask Jeff, what other options are there? How do other municipalities handle unauthorized, unauthorized expenditure of public money is what's happening? We didn't approve this.
You have two choices. You can recover the money, or you can ratify the act. That's, those are your two choices.
So recovering would mean the employees had to pay it back?
Correct.
I don't want the employees to have a burden.
That's, that's, those are the two choices. It's avoidable transaction. It hasn't been done in accordance with state law. That's your two choices.
So we need to ratify these increases in order to make it legal?
That's, that ratification legitimizes, it basically is, you know, legitimizes what was done within a budget, I suppose. You budget so much for wages if you, if, if you, these raises put, if this amount of money put you over what was in the budget, we would need a resolution to amend the budget.
So we can ratify or approve these raises?
Yes.
Either one accomplishes the same thing.
These represent, on an annual basis, these represent about twenty thousand dollars. How, how do we know if that puts us over our, our payroll budget for this fiscal year?
The projection of what, at, at the time, I assume there was a projection looking at it, that it was within a budget, the amount that was budgeted for compensation for, uh, employees. Your payroll, total payroll.
Do, do you have?
So your police officer and clerk were included in your budget retrieved. Um, the public works.
Was the raise included in the budget retrieved?
Yes, it was included in the budget retrieved. No, it was given to you, uh, mister. Because of the dates, if you look at the dates, they were done on, uh, three twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. Sorry, you don't have those dates. I do. Clerk was four twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Police officer was three twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. Um, and public works was seven one, twenty twenty-one. It's just the two new ones that are, that the mayor explained to you were in-house promotions.
I would make a comment on this.
Yes, sir.
In the past, uh, there were motions made that we should pay the bills. And I rejected that idea because I don't know what the bills are. Now we're asked to acknowledge the payment of bills that have already been paid, which trustee Maynard and I have looked at and have some questions on. Now, according to make it legal, you can write the check, but you can't send it out until the board approves it. Now, how is that going to affect the actual payment to vendors now? What kind of delay will that cause? I don't like to write a blank check.
No.
And just say it's okay to go ahead and pay the bills when I don't know what they are. I would kind of like to know, uh, who's getting the money before it goes out.
On that one, I mean, I have invited you personally. I've invited everyone of y'all, and we sign the checks. Anyone of y'all are more than welcome to come look at every single check I sign. It does take a lot of work, you know, on your part of it. But if we wait till the every board meeting before we pay our bills, we'll lay down our bills.
That's what I'm asking.
And that's.
Can we set a written date and time to view the checks before they go out?
I think so.
Okay, then we should do that.
Whenever she's, whenever she does.
So would we only be cutting checks once a month at that point?
No, we would have to cut checks at her schedule.
Yes.
So if we can, we can call.
Schedule is.
We can call every one of y'all each time we got a check.
And I, I think th- this is just personnel issues, but, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it, it leads to the whole question.
Yes, it does.
So do we need to have each trustee come in before we send out checks?
I don't, you know, I, I think maybe you should, you know, maybe George, we could appoint you to be the person that would go check for us.
Do it.
And, and say, okay, we trust you to go do that for us because I don't think I'm going to come every time and check a check. But I would trust your opinion and what you see there on that paper to, to bring that back to us.
I would if I could.
And give us, uh, maybe put it on the, on the agenda and say, let's, let's look at it.
I think, uh, overall bills, that's another discussion, you know, and people will point to your.
Let's get back to the salary increases and agenda. Now, the first two are changes of employment, and they were voted on last special meeting, that entire list. But since there was a addition of pay, we just wanted to make sure we covered all our bases. I'd rather have two votes instead she got a raise than no vote.
Well, and that's the purpose of this. The law has evolved based on that the collective discussion, I, I like to say wisdom, I'm not sure what applies to me, but, but the collective discussion, you make a sounder decision than, than whenever any one person is put in there. When, when we have people that move, and promoting it internally is a good deal, my, uh, my question on it last time was as we move someone into a new job, you've always got a learning curve. They, they don't, just because you promote them, they don't instantly know their new job. That's, uh, that's something that you'll see a few months later, how well they do in each new job. So if any time there's, there's a wage increase of any kind, it comes before us. It's not an automatic.
If it doesn't hand it properly according to the law, I would make a motion to accept and go forward with all of the raises we've been given.
There is a motion on the table.
Can I say something?
In a second. There is a motion on the table to accept and go forward with all the raises that were given, I mean, in the past, with the acknowledgement of some discrepancies of how I did it. Now it is open for a second.
I'll say.
Have a second. Now we are open for discussion. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that, you know, I think, and I've heard this, and, and we've gone over this, and Barbara went over it with some with me the other day, and, you know, I would rather have the village have, be together as the employees together and with you, supporting you, than to see disruption. And I think that, yes, you did not come before us. I understand that. But I also understand you're trying to create harmony and, and workability and cohesiveness in your environment. And I think that's a good thing. And I think to keep good employees, which I've seen over the years, to keep those employees, I think, yeah, they deserve something to keep them here. So.
I appreciate that. Yes, sir.
I just, uh, would suggest that, that you make the motion specifically using the word ratify the raises because they were, they were done before today. That will clarify any question as to whether or not they can go back and re-cover.
Okay. For that, I would need a, an amendment on a motion.
And you, you wanted to say what?
Ratify.
Oh.
Accept it.
Okay, I make a motion that we ratified the, the payroll adjustments that were made for the various employees listed on this, agenda.
Okay, I have a motion, an amendment to the motion on the table to ratify all of the raises that are on this agenda under this topic on the agenda as written. Do I have a second to be amended?
Second.
Okay, they moved this. Any further discussion?
I want to, uh, that, that we have made the point that this was not done properly. I, I want that to reflect in the minutes. I know we don't verbatim. But I think it's an important thing. If we ever have this discussion again, we, we go back, nobody can say, I don't know. We all know.
You want verbatim? Is that what you said, sir? I'm sorry.
Not verbatim, but in the, in the minutes that, that it was not done properly, that it was done improperly.
Just, just to give you some comfort, ratification has legal meaning. And ratification is for avoidable transaction. That means that it wasn't proper and could be voided. So with, by using the terminology ratification, it has specific legal.
Well, I certainly don't want to take away from the families that are counting on this money. I would point out, the mayor has done a good job of apologizing, explaining this to Barbara as a clerk. The clerk is the, to me, like the go-to person in our community. She also has to be very aware of our laws. This is part of the same oath. These oaths should not be hollow.
I'm sorry, sir. I was very aware of the oath and the law, and it was brought before the mayor each time.
It was, actually.
I just would like to clar- clarify that.
But you, but you wrote checks?
Okay, stop. We're going to bring this back into. Not have a discussion here. We are having a motion on the table. So we're not going to get unravaged. This mistake was made by me and me alone. But.
It can't be made by you or me alone.
It was made by me and me alone, but there was multiple people that knew about it that said nothing until recently. Because everybody in this table minus Mr. McCoy knew that I had given the raises. And so they, by turn, knew that it didn't come through the council. So I will take full responsibility for doing this. But if we're going to share responsibility, everybody at this table has to share it. Because it was, and you knew about Barbara's raise the first meeting after, after she got it. So did everybody here. So.
We did. How did we go?
Because we talked about it. We just didn't make a motion. All right, so do, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Everybody that got a raise has been ratified and will retain their raise. And I will not give a raise again without trustee support or make a hire. Okay. We're going to move on. This is village code seven dash one A dash two B, the water surcharge. And this is, it says on here to recommend to direct attorney for the rewrite. Now, on this, this is what we discussed in our work session over the, the fifteen-dollar surcharge, which we would go up, is it now ten dollars?
Yes.
Now, after a little bit more review on there, if we do this right now and post it, it's going to be at least a hundred and fifty dollars just for that one part. I know there's other parts that we've actually gotten finished on here. But I kind of want to hold off on this one and tie more of them together, that we've worked out the details. If we're, I'm, I'm fine with doing, you know, bits at a time. But right now, we've only got one thing on that. So if we can add a couple more, because I know we do have more that are already changed that we have agreed upon.
So your money costs a hundred and fifty dollars to publish it?
For the publishing.
Publishing.
It's about seventy-five dollars.
You have to publish twice.
Right. Each time you publish.
So seventy-five a piece?
Yes.
Well, it depends on how, how, how much burden there is. It's newspaper lines.
The, the goal of getting something on this done, we've been talking about this since May.
Right.
And what we're trying to do was establish a reoccurring income stream so we have money to fix our roads and additional money to work on our water. The, uh, the, the amount, the hundred and fifty dollars doesn't matter compared to the money this would generate if we go ahead and adopt it. One month of this will generate, uh, ten thousand dollars. A little bit more than that. So you're, the, the reason to do something is not because it costs us a hundred and fifty?
No, the reason that I was looking at is we've already made through the work with the committee, and then the, the few sessions that we've had, we've made a lot more progress than this one thing. I would like to get three or four things in there that we've already, everybody agreed on.
So, so, okay.
And if we want to do one more work session just to get, then those four things. If you want to publish it, this one, I'm fine with it. But I was just trying to get a little more on my, the whole point on this ordinance was more for the being able to turn off water, the non-pays, uh, stuff like that were, and more than the revenue part.
This one, th- this would generate eleven thousand in quick math if we only had three-quarter inch meters. So it's eleven thousand plus per month. So to me, if we don't get started on a road fund, we're going to go through another year of not enough money to work on our roads.
And is that your motion then, to publish?
Yes. Yep. I have a motion on the table.
I'd make a motion, we'd go ahead and give the attorney instructions to publish the amendment to, uh, Title VII.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to publish the amendment to Title VII dash one A dash two B, the water surcharge. Do I have a second? No second?
I'll say.
Okay, you have a second by trustee Teeman. Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
I have one.
Okay.
Well, if we're discussing money about repay raises, and we're worried about that, then I think a hundred and fifty dollars is something to think about. And to go back and say, if we got four more of these, that's a hundred and fifty dollars. I mean, you know, we're stopping and going.
Right.
And it's hard to get together.
This generates eleven thousand the first month. You're, you're putting a hundred and fifty dollars, you're trading a hundred and fifty for eleven thousand. That, that's, this is good business for the village.
But it has to be published first.
Yeah.
And the, and the public has to know about it, right?
I have a suggestion.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Basically, what you're telling, what you're voting on is for me to do this one thing. And I would have it done, and we would have to get it to the newspaper at least two weeks before the next regular meeting for you to adopt it at the next regular meeting and make it effective on a blank date. Between now and how, you know, you can get, it used to be it'd take three days to get to the paper before, you know, it started getting published. I don't know how quick it is right now.
It's usually two to three days now.
Basically, you have another eight, you know, ten to, ten to fourteen days maximum, maybe ten to twelve days to make any other changes. And all you have, you know, all, all I have to have is the mayor's instruction to do it.
Okay.
If, if, if the mayor instructs me to, to do a, an ordinance. If the mayor instructs me to do an ordinance that makes this amendment and a notice of proposed ordinance, and he wants to add something, it doesn't have to be approved for me to do that. You don't have to, that doesn't have to happen every time. It's normal, there's nothing wrong with it because you get to discuss it more than once. But literally, he could call me up tomorrow and say, we want to, we want to put this language in there as well.
That sounds good.
And that way, you know, if.
Let's think about this. Can I amend my motion, include this plus any additional?
There you go.
Information we give anybody?
That works, that works just fine.
What would the cutoff date be if we're going to get this in the paper?
I used to send it to the paper. I don't anymore. I don't have anything to do with the paper anymore. I just do.
Do you know the dates, Barbara, please?
It's on the day of the week.
We have a work session.
If we can get it published on the twenty-fifth of January?
Who's up for a work session on the eighteenth?
I.
Okay. Good as that. Eighteenth is next Tuesday. Yes, ma'am.
So you want to do a work session on the eighteenth?
Do the work session on the eighteenth. We'll add what we need to on there. I wasn't trying to avoid this.
It's better if we.
That's a really good idea.
Oh, yeah, we've studied too long.
You have a lot of language in there that is just updates that is brought up at one point that we've reviewed in the committee.
If we concentrate our work session on the things that we have already.
No new discussion?
Yeah.
Just the thoughts that we've already have to go over.
Yes.
If we disagree on something, we go to the next thing. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right, do we need a?
What time?
Five o'clock.
On the eighteenth?
Five o'clock on the eighteenth, that's next Tuesday.
So Jeff, before I, I don't know if it's up to me to make the amendment motion.
Do we even need a motion on this, honestly?
Not really. It's not absolutely necessary. Now, if any board member wants me to prepare an ordinance on something for discussion, I'm going to do it. I need to have some direction as to what you're doing, what you're, obviously, what you have in mind.
So we don't have to have this voted on tonight for you to publish it?
No.
By the twenty-fifth, that's what we get.
If I get the information that, you know, these things, the mayor says, you know, after your workshop, you keep minutes on your workshop, right?
We have started.
Okay, it's an open meeting. Okay. That would be a supplemental thing to what you just given me. I'm going to start with this, I'll have this done tomorrow.
Perfect.
And so I can start adding, it won't take as much to add on if I have one.
This page, does that include things?
That's the original order, as it stands right now.
I see, because it just had surcharge, okay.
I need to make a very important comment, though.
Yes, ma'am.
The effective date is going to be depending on, Barbara and I had a conversation with Jessica, we have to be, we are still waiting on the answer to see if the software will even let us fill each account with a separate, a different surcharge. We don't even know for sure if our system will do this yet, so that'll be very important as to, for Bill's beginning. If it was just a twenty dollar surcharge or a ten, a fifteen, a twenty, twenty-five, it would be different, but the way that this is written, each account would have, could have a separate surcharge. We're not even sure yet if our billing software will do that.
Then the minimum we would do is raise it to fifteen for all.
Correct, for all meters. So the way it's written now, after discussing with Jessica today, we're not sure our software will do.
Can you do that still by the eighteenth?
Be sure, I sent her an email today, and so I should hear back, and hopefully by tomorrow.
Then we can clarify our language at our workshop on the eighteenth. If we can't do it, then we'll do it some other way.
The draft I'm going to do tomorrow is going to be one amount, fifteen dollars.
Okay, we're sure we can do that.
Yeah.
Yes, you can, you could for sure increase from five to fifteen.
For sure.
Okay. All right, we can do a motion if you want, or we can just direct an app to the work session. Okay, let's move to.
We've got a motion on the second on the table.
We do?
Do.
Are you amending your motion to include?
Changes on the workshop on the eighteenth.
Okay, we do have a motion on the table. We did have a second, didn't we?
We did, we're discussing that.
Yep.
You can always rescind your motion.
Yeah, we can include it.
Pull it off the table.
There is an amendment on the motion to include the work that we do on the eighteenth. Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Second by trustee Mitchell. Any more discussion? Everybody clear? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay. This one's an easy one, and really, probably shouldn't have to be on here, but it was such a cost that we need to, there is a good way to do it. We need a Woodlands booster house, booster house meter. It's a four-inch. The approximate cost should be under seven thousand five hundred dollars for this meter.
I got a price today, it was thirty-seven hundred dollars, but that's the price today. The meter's twelve to sixteen weeks out, and that price is not set.
Did that have a meter on it? I've forgotten.
Yeah, it's a Tiger Bad meter, it's a production meter for the Woodlands tank.
Yep.
Yes. And when we had a pile of it up there last week, it kind of flagged the meter itself.
So it's not, it's not recording?
It's not recording, so we got a price today. I was trying to get two of the prices, but the price I found out now is thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Yes. And we still get water up there?
Yes, we're still pumping water up here.
Yes, sir.
Sixteen weeks?
Things are crazy. That's the reason I have him go higher on the price than what he would.
Do you need, you're asking for a seventy-five hundred dollar cost, but.
Up two.
Is that, if it's sixteen weeks from now, that cost might be.
If it's over seventy-five hundred, I want it to come back in front of the council.
Will they let you go ahead and pay for it?
They will let you pay for it. You pay for it now, it's still, that price is not long.
Yeah.
The COVID has everything so scarcity right now, they're not setting anything in stone anymore. Any product I purchased here in the last seven months, I get a price on it, by the time I get it, I've almost, sometimes tripled by price I'm purchasing.
But you said, sir, if it comes in over seventy-five hundred, you want them to approve it at that point? We're not going to know until they bill us.
Right, and we'll bring it back in front of the council.
Yeah.
If it is.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have to have a meter?
Mr. Hall?
Yes, we need the meter. Then we don't have any choice.
Is that a motion? Hey, I have a motion on the table by trustee Mitchell to approve the four-inch meter?
Yep.
Do I have a second? I have a second by trustee Mayner. Any further discussion?
I don't want to hamstring you with seventy-five hundred dollars. If it comes in, two days after we've had a trustee meeting, you're going to wait another month and the price is going to be altogether different.
I'll call a special meeting. I have a comment from the water department.
Is this something we're going to have to do every time something breaks?
No.
Is come in front of the council and ask, because if I have Scott or something, we don't have a month to wait to get approval. So is this something we have to do?
No, this should be on the budget retreat. We should have plenty of money in the budget for spare parts and pieces.
And emergencies.
And emergencies. Just with everything that was brought up for this meeting, I wanted to make sure that nothing was questioned.
Because sometimes we can't wait a month.
No, we understand that.
So, okay.
Let me just say something. Spending the public money is not meant to have, you have to approve every single thing by board. That's what the budget is for. You set a budget for that amount of money, the purchasing officer, who is also your finance officer, has to make sure that the procurement code is followed. That means getting bids, that means, and there's flexibility in that. If you're going to go over the budget, you've got fifty thousand dollars budgeted in this one, and all of a sudden, it's going to jump to sixty, then you need a resolution to do it.
And in our budgets, if we're identifying, let's just say this was in budget retreat, seventy-five hundred dollars for a pump. Okay, they can't decide not to go buy the pump and go buy a pickup truck instead with the money. The budgets have to identify what you're approving the money for.
You understand that there's not a budget for every single line, specific thing that has to.
But we have parts and, I forget what I recall it, we know it's a collection of parts, but it has to be a collection of parts. They can't take the money and go buy a new road grader with the same money. That's a different request. So our budgets are defined. Now, you have to know your general descriptions in your budgets. It's not anything you want to go buy.
I just don't want to hamstring this to where it costs a problem.
Exactly.
We need an emergency fund for wire work. If for some reason this thing would come in at eight thousand instead of seventy-five hundred, let's say, he should be able to go ahead and say, do it.
I think once we've printed it, we probably are on the hook for it as a building. You know? They're ordering it because we told them to go buy it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This next one has not been budgeted for or talked about. And is actually quite necessary. But our friend Grover over here, who is our videographer, unofficial videographer, has found a sound system, eight-channel wireless microphone system that would be spread out here, and I know everybody can hear me in the back, but especially when you get masks on, some people are light spoken and it's hard when it gets crowded in here. But a big thing is when we do the Zoom meetings and different things in here, not council-related but business-related, microphones would be very handy. He has also volunteered to help wire them in and maintain them, make sure they're all working.
That's okay, we're wireless.
They are wireless, but there's still parts that have to be plugged in by somebody who knows more about it than me or you.
Now, years ago, we had microphones for each position in here. What happened to that amplifying system?
I don't have any idea. I don't remember a microphone in here.
Yes, we did.
It was long ago, that's been auctioned off.
Auctioned off?
I have one at his school, it worked pretty good. I don't know. That was.
These electronics are so cheap, there's.
I mean, this is really, it's not that big of a deal as far as money-wise, but with it being something that's brand new and right in front of everybody, I figure, let's get this on the table.
And cost yet?
Yeah, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and maybe one cent.
It's not too bad.
I'll make the motion if we buy the wireless sound system for the village chamber.
Okay, I have a motion to purchase the sound system of these specs for the village chamber. Do I have a second?
Second.
They moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, discussion asked, action. Metal building cost expense in need. Mr. Mayner, this is your.
This, this metal building, again, it's a procedural item, expensive item, and now we've got a three and a half billion dollar capital outlay request for a joint facility. The very nature that we did our capital outlay request, to me, proves without doubt, we don't need this building. When we got this building, these metal building salesmen are good. It's a pretty much an industry standard, they'll call you upset, I've got one, a guy didn't take. Maybe it's true, maybe it's not true, who knows? It doesn't matter. The, my point of this, this is an item where the mayor decided to buy this building without a vote from the trustees. So. Yes, sir.
I believe we all talked about it, it grew the possibility.
We didn't have a vote. So as I say, it's a procedural issue. It's not a needed item. We have spent money on different things in this last year instead of fixing roads and water lines. We keep on saying we don't have the money, we don't have the manpower, but when something like this comes up, and we just buy it. This is, we can't, we can't run a village this way. This spontaneous purchases are decisions that aren't thought through. If every question Kevin brought before us, once this building had been decided on, we would have done, if it had been a vote, it'd be like, well, where are you going to get the money for the concrete? Where are you going to get the money? Where are you going to put it? You know, we didn't know anything. We just bought a building. That, that it did not come before us for a vote is the issue. The, these major items have to be decided by the council. This wasn't in our budget, it wasn't in our budget retreat, it came out of the blue. One meeting, we talked about, hey, we're looking at this thing, the next thing we knew, I bought it. So the "I bought it" is the part that's wrong. Mayors cannot spend money without the authority granted by the trustees. That is, that's just the way the law works. So what are we going to do with this building? It's sitting in the dirt up here. Whatever warranty there was on it is going away.
The plan is to see how the capital outlay funds go. If we get the new emergency center, we may not need it, we'll find something to do with it. Right now, we could probably sell it for what we paid for, but I don't know that.
It would help us pay for our previous.
It could. If we get everything from the state that we're asking, then we will address that. If we get part of it, we might be putting up that building because we can still put it in the complex. And I believe it was you that found the spot right next to the fire department. I mean, that's still a complex. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of options. This one's not completely off the table. Now, I don't remember if we had a vote or not, but I know we had a lot of discussion and we had a, definitely a consensus by the board, by everyone on the board, there was no objections in meetings on this. And that's the reason it happened. The big thing was the pitch on the roof, which was addressed, but.
Mayor, the legislative session begins January eighteenth.
Okay.
And it's a thirty-day this year. After the session in mid-February, the governor has, I believe, twenty days to sign off on legislation, so we would know by mid-March at the latest what capital outlay revenues we get.
So if we get the, if we get the full amount, we may be, you know, building something really grand down there. If we get part of it, I mean, we can, we can still build a police department. Actually have a good start.
Okay, that was my point, is that, again, we'll beat this one for a little while. The, the purchasing power comes from the trustees. So we're going to keep the building for the time being and see what the legislative session.
Okay, do we need a motion on this or just, this is just discussion? Okay, let's move on to the next one.
On the.
Is the discussion action, the adoption of resolution number? Or, oh, I am on the wrong agenda. Sorry, I was going through the old agenda. Okay, the remodel of the village front office, the mayor's office, and the exterior paint. Okay. The front office was during COVID. It was then building maintenance budget originally. We did have to move some budget money around a little bit, and I would. Now, Jenny, do you want to get into that one or explain how to move the money around on the budgets or?
If that's what you want me to do.
Go into the office remodel question.
Whatever you instruct me to do.
Okay, the office remodel was we were, I don't know if you remember the old office. It was part of the board furniture and not comfortable and very not COVID safe. But we got shut down for COVID for two weeks. Then Jubal had a couple of discussions and originally, we're looking at a, you know, quick, we can make this nice, we can make COVID reliable, and our guys can do pretty much ninety percent of the work relatively inexpensively. And then we got hit with COVID and I lost our entire crew while we're shut down after the demo. And so we did go, the prices did go up. I wanted it to look nice, I wanted it to look, to match this place. And we stayed in budget, we just didn't have it directly.
But you have a building maintenance category.
Yes.
Which covers both the painting cost and the cost of the loss.
But I didn't bring it to y'all that I was going to redo the entire.
You've already, and we've already told you, you're spending one thousand dollars.
And what we did is used up office supply businesses. Office supplies should not be used for building remodels. That's a, and this, again, procedural is the issue. It's beautiful, the work done is great. An old building can do some work. These, these are major expenses. I lost track of how Barbara totaled this for me. One of these says expenditures in these two line items is sixty-five thousand. The, you know, like exterior paint, okay, that comes out of building, building maintenance. I think nobody can argue about that.
The exterior paint was budgeted for in the prior fiscal year presented at the.
In our budget retreat. And so that's, that's the way to do this stuff. When we, I have heard from so many people in the community, it's like, why can't you fix my road, but you have plenty of money to redo the office?
The office hadn't been done since the eighties. And it's the very first place anybody knew that comes into the village. It's their first impression, I thought the front office was important. Again, this is one, I'll take full responsibility and full blame for doing it without letting it in front of you. But I am going to throw my caveat in that all of y'all knew what was going on. Jim, you're the one that volunteered to do the front countertop. And that, you know, that was a big chunk of money right there.
Wait a minute, I'm at a loss. You've got a line item, a budget item. Why are you, why are you trying to justify it because it was in the budget when we approved it?
Because it was brought in front of the meeting by a disgruntled trustee that I did it wrong.
I don't see that.
Do you have this?
There was a line item budget at all in here for anything, and I said, there's an issue. You are, we approved this much, months and months ago. And just because it doesn't specifically say office, it says building maintenance, so.
But not all the money came out of building maintenance, John. I agree with you, but all came from building maintenance, that's one thing. When we started, we spent this money and then they went back and found some budget they could pull the money from. When they start pulling it from office supplies.
You have desks.
Well, I mean, it's, again, office supplies are like paper and ink and stuff. They're normal expenses we've gone through every year. I just think procedural, and disgruntled's not a bad word.
I wouldn't change it.
No, it doesn't. It is a procedural deal. If we're going to get into these, these major expenses, we need to talk about this stuff in detail.
Then why do we spend so much time doing budgets? That's a waste of time.
Did the budget include the request to do a remodel of this building? No.
The budget is a large bulk piece of paper that covers the entire building. Line, specific line items are never within a budget. You only, just like this building maintenance, it covers a multitude of things. You don't say, oh, office this, parking lot, that, don't do that.
I think a building remodel, as extensive as we remodeled this building, should have been before us. That's my point. Like, why wouldn't it come before us?
Because I spent three days doing a budget and said, okay, here's your budget, operate with that. That's what they've done.
Nothing was hidden. I told y'all all about it.
No, you, you can see it.
I was actually pretty proud of it from the, from the start, the way we get them updated.
The end result is nice. The, it was like one step at a time. It was never explained to us, we're going to do the whole building.
We haven't done the whole building yet.
Well, I hope you're through. We have spent all of our maintenance money right now. If we have an issue, we don't have any more money in these maintenance accounts. It's not going to, it has nothing to do with it. What could possibly go wrong? So, point made.
Are we good on that one?
No action on the floor.
Okay. And the last one, we moved up to the first one. We are walking through the third page. What happened to the one page that's in there? Okay, this one is a very important one to discuss. And I don't know how much discussion there will be, but we need to approve or disapprove a submittal of notice of intent for the 2022 Colonial Infrastructure Funding. This is something we do every year, it's a really good source of funding for us. Some of it does come from loans, some of it's grants, am I correct on that one?
Yes, so, so the handout that is included in your packet, at the top, it says Colonial Infrastructure Board Overview. What types of projects are eligible for the funding? There's six of them listed. It's time for the cycle to begin again for the funding. What is required right now is only a notice of intent that we would like to apply for funding for a project of some kind. We need to, if the governing body still wishes for us to go out for Colonial's funding, we need to pick a category, if you will, but we need to keep in mind that whatever amount of money that we ask for, that there is a ten percent cash match component and a ten percent loan component. So depending on what we would present, would depend on whether or not the governing body wants to assume another loan and try to find money for a cash match. So the funding, it's, it's time to start thinking about it. And like I said, a notice of intent needs to be done before the nineteenth of January. And then the cycle opens the twenty-seventh. And then in March is the application where we would have an actual resolution stating the exact project. Now, from a notice of intent, we have to pick a category and then talk briefly about a project out of that category and if in fact this is something that we want to do. Last year or year before, maybe it was last year, we had applied for Colonial's funding for a, a, a big road project, like two million, and we probably would have gotten it, but then the governing body decided that we didn't, they didn't want to take on the loan component part of that. So it's my duty to bring funding opportunities to you all, and this is another one that's coming up. And that's what I would like for you all to have a discussion about.
Question. If we submit a notice of intent.
Yes, sir.
Can we back out later?
Yes, sir, this is just to get us into the cycle.
Okay.
We can't jump in there late, but we don't have to do it.
We have actually turned down monies when they were ready, when the agreement was ready to be signed off on.
So the last thing we have to do is match ten percent, is that right?
Okay, so if we say we want to talk about road infrastructure, fifty thousand dollars, then ten percent is loan and ten percent is a cash match. So we really need to think about how much money are we willing to go out there and ask for? So we could start with a dollar threshold and then you can pick a category, that's the way you would want to do it. That's what I recommend because of the loan component. The loans, they're twenty-year, not interest, and we have three Colonial loans right now, and they're approximately fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars a year, is it a year?
Forty-seven hundred, eighteen hundred, and thirteen hundred.
So we already have three Colonial loans. So it all just depends if you all want to go out there and, and try to get some more money, but keep in mind that there is a loan component attached to that.
We did, because it was, it was a cash, it was a very large cash match last year, wasn't it?
Yes.
It's twenty percent basically, you've got your loan.
And we just, this, last year was really high and we didn't have the cash match to.
It would have hurt to keep the door open.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
You can always back out later.
I just, I, I would need to know what type of a project and what kind of a, what a dollar threshold for you all.
Roads and water, that's your chance. But we've got time to decide that.
No, I need to know tonight, a notice of intent, and I need to.
You need to say it?
A, a project, a, a project from one of the categories and a dollar amount threshold. I need that tonight if we're going to enter into the cycle.
And, and what were the, it can be used in the infrastructure?
So that you should have, okay, there's six. Water systems, wastewater systems, solid waste disposal, flood and drainage, road infrastructure, housing infrastructure.
Road infrastructure.
Man, we're back in the losing battle of road infrastructure. Oh, yeah, that would be.
Now, there is more. I got also a letter, a letter today, it's time again from Mexico, DOT monies. We've been very, very successful, as you know, the last couple of years for those. So we probably will be going out for maybe another MAP, MAP application, which will be from the highway, Route we did over here on Swallow, and we're getting ready to do what to Squirrel. We could do another one from Highway up Curly Place?
Curly.
To the, so we could apply for that. That would be another good one to apply for.
Another place this will come up, when they do the, that study for the pure water project operation and maintenance budgets, they're going to look at how many we're paying. And, and that's going to be, we don't know how that study goes, but that may be where if we have too much debt.
They will look at that.
Then to prove that we can do the operation and maintenance of the pure project, we may have to have another adjustment in our water bill or something.
And I'm hoping, of the three Colonius, they're nine thousand a year is what we're paying back right now.
We don't have to commit ourselves now, just show the intent.
I think.
It opens the door.
I think water system and road infrastructure, to me, I mean, that's, that's what we need in this town.
I would look at, and I'm all for the road infrastructure, but I think we've got to look at water system, wastewater system, because that's kind of a pet peeve of mine to build a brand new road over a bad water line.
So are you talking water sewer line replacement kind of?
Yes.
Project?
Can we group them together?
We.
And then also include roads?
That would be two different, that would be two notice of intents. That would be two grants, two loan components.
Because I mean, that's one that we're working on right now with the squirrel project as Jubal's getting the, the prices on redoing the sewer line.
You've got, you've got parts of town that you, I think Jubal could verify, the infrastructure underneath the roads are regular. And it would be like, all right, but we don't, we don't have as much money coming in for roads, and that's why the whole push on, on getting that added tonight, so we had some kind of income stream for roads. If this is another source, because roads, I mean, you could spend two million dollars and not touch this down. You know, it's a, so if we look at these, do we round it off to a million dollars and see if we can get one or?
Now, this has to be a certain road, correct?
Well, I mean, I could get with, with Jubal, we could figure that out, but, but a, a million dollars, that's, I don't, do we really, is that really a, a, another debt service that we can take on with a million dollars?
But aren't we waiting till March to see if we get that?
No.
Water truck, the water truck for the, I mean, the gravel roads that George mentioned the last meeting. I mean, we could do roads like that, that would be, and you've got the water truck and the roller that you could do the roads. Let's think of something else to put it, I mean, I understand we do need roads, but.
So a mile, a mile of water sewer lines is about fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, give or take, I mean, it's like I priced out due Corona from the lodge down to McDaniel, a year and a half ago, and the price that I had just for the water sewer, new hydrants, new taps to all the homes was about nine hundred thousand dollars.
So I guess what I'm asking is from you all, do you want Jubal and I to get together and pick an area of town other than Mountain Top that needs some water sewer line replacement? Or do you want to pick a section of road? I, I need to know if I have, what you all want me to do.
Let me tell you, if we got one for water sewer and roads, if it's two different ones, we just, in tonight's proposal, we created about ninety-nine thousand dollars in income stream for water sewer infrastructure and ninety-nine thousand for roads. A way that you leverage that, if we have these other colonial payments, what'd you say they were a year, nine thousand dollars?
Collectively, yes, sir.
So we've created the income stream that can let you service a debt, or you wait on the income stream to build until you can do a little section of road. Now, if it's a mile, is nine hundred thousand on sewer and water, Jubal?
That's just on this water, no sewer. We only probably got probably forty feet of sewer after we've done that thorough way for.
But nine hundred thousand, you can do a mile.
Nine hundred mile, yes.
Then if we had another nine hundred thousand, we could do, how much road can we do for them?
It's going to be. We can do, well, the swat, the Highway eighty-two up Swallow was a two hundred and sixty thousand dollars budget.
That's paving with, with curbs. In roads, you have to decide, are you going to build a gravel or are you going to chip steel?
Right, and that's what I'm hoping that Stent can help consult with Jubal and I.
If we, if we apply for it and get it, then we can decide whether we take it or not.
So I, so I would need to know.
Jimmy, would they do, if you applied for a million and then we decided we could only do five hundred thousand, when they awarded you a million, could you only ask for five hundred thousand?
I think you can probably scale now, I believe so.
Just not scale up. That would be.
So we could make a motion to apply for roads.
And sewer.
And water and sewer.
And is that an area that you would leave up to the mayor and I and Jubal to determine the need?
I, I think we would need him because Jubal knows what's out in the field. We don't know.
How long before you have to identify which road?
Well, in the notice of intent, they're probably going to want, want that.
The reason why I keep addressing the one on Corona, because that's all lead pack should always stand there. That's all lead pack from lodge all the way down to Squirrel Landing. That's why I keep addressing that one. And you also got the one behind Eagle Place Apartments, which is asbestos. But we don't have an issue with asbestos as long as you keep it buried. But the lead pack, that's the one I'm more concerned about. Because, yeah, even though you can dig them up and keep packing them, eventually you can't pack them no more, they're just going to keep dripping.
That's a pretty good road, though, you're talking about digging up.
Yeah, it is good in some places, but it's getting thin, just like everything else. You know, there ain't been no recap on any of these streets in seven years. And that's why we're in the particular we are right now, we run out of, we used to have a matching front at the county, a seventy-five, twenty-five match, you know? Then the county came in and said, we're going to no longer do that. So that kind of kicked us in the butt, and we can't, we lost, we lost a lot of roads because we didn't have the money to come back and recap it.
So if we got the loan to do that one and can service it, it's debt, then it would free up our other money to do better jobs on other roads.
Yes.
Stand for motion.
I would move then that we submit a notice of intent for two separate projects.
Okay.
One for water and sewer and the other for roads, infrastructure.
Have a motion to submit a letter of intent for two separate projects, roads and water and sewer, they cleaned up a bunch.
They'll figure that out. They'll figure that out.
Oh.
We don't have to send it out here.
I'll send it out. And a second by trustee Maynard? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Statement of revenues and expenditures. Yes, sir.
I looked at it, but I don't like it, because... The checks have already gone out, so it's gonna make a great deal of difference now. And that brings up another, well, we...
I, I have invited you several times.
Yes, yes, sir.
That is a standing invitation.
But, but the attorney's statement, the, the council must approve all expenditures. The council, I can't go in and approve a check. I feel like I can just look at it.
Right.
And voice an objection to later, at a meeting. So mine coming and looking at a check is not gonna make any difference at all, it has nothing to do with it.
And I think most of these are in our approved budget.
Yes, they are, yeah. And that's what I'm primarily concerned with.
Now, how, how we separate those two? The more, the better job we do on our budget computer, the less question marks there are. If something is not in budget or not identified, that's what I'm talking about. You know, it's a, so, never be a verb before.
I will have to disagree with George's statement of it not making any difference. I think the more you don't, of everything going in and out of this office, the better you are, and the better the whole council is.
Yes.
So that invitation is still open, and I'll call you if you'd like.
Call me then, and, uh, when the checks are signed, I need, if, if I'm going, I, I can't approve the checks.
No, but you can look at them, you'll know what they are.
Well, you may just send me a check registered after the fact then.
If you get to, if you come in and look at the checks, all of the backup for that check is attached to each check.
I remember seeing that.
I'm kidding, it's really great the way they do it.
It, it's actually quite educational to be able to get into them.
John, do you co-sign the checks every time?
Not every time. He does.
Just looking at that backup, it's just, it does leave any questions, it's gonna tell you exactly what it is.
The checks are quite two signatures, John.
Yes.
If you don't sign, who else?
The mayor and the clerk.
The clerk, okay.
And the mayor pro tem will step in for me if I'm not available.
If he's available.
If he's available. Or the clerk can actually, he can step in, you too, can't he? As long as there's two.
Two signatures.
Two signatures.
So the two verifications of the check, all right. All I need to do is the check register, and I will acknowledge, have a look at the check registry.
Okay, a motion on the table to acknowledge the statements of revenues and expenditures.
I shall move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll stand for one more motion.
I'll move with Jerry.
A motion to adjourn. A second? All in favor? Close. Motion carries. Yes, sir.
By law, the minimum wage change.